Good evening and welcome to the Candidates Forum presented by the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County. My name is Angela Ryan and I am the President of the Northwest Wayne County League. Tonight we have a two-part forum. We welcome the candidates running for the Plymouth Canton Community School Board, followed by a candidate running for the Michigan House of Representatives, the 20th District. We thank the City of Plymouth for allowing us to use their facility for this public education event. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. We do not support or oppose any candidate running for any office. The League does take positions on issues after careful study, so you may see our name attached to an issue that we are advocating for or opposing. Membership in the League is open to all citizens who are at least 16 years old, so if you're interested in joining this public service organization, please let us know, and we do have membership applications here tonight. They're on the table outside the door. The League's main mission is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation in government. One of the ways we do that is by having forums such as this one tonight. The League is also preparing a nonpartisan voter guide, which can be found online at www.vot411.org at the end of September. By typing in your voting address, you can view the races on your primary ballot and the candidates' responses to questions posed by the League. You can also find the link to the voter guide on our website, www.lwvnorthwestwayne.org. And so I don't expect you to remember those websites. They are provided on this free bookmark that we've put outside. That also is on the table by the door. Print copies of the voter guide will be available in the public libraries the first week in October. If you would like to ask questions of the candidates, this is those of you in the audience, and we certainly encourage this, please write your question on a card and hand it to one of the ushers in the aisle. Our moderator will ask as many questions as time allows. Questions should be brief, to the point, and should not include personal attacks on the candidates. We reserve the right to screen the questions for duplication and clarity. At this time, we would ask all of our audience members to please be sure their cellphones are silenced. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and not of the League of Women Voters. At this time, I'd like to introduce our moderator, League member Susan Rowe, who will provide you with more details about tonight's forum.
Thank you, Angela. Again, good evening to candidates. My name is Susan Rowe and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County. We're pleased that you all could join us tonight if we hear from candidates running for the two seats on the Plymouth Canton Community School Board and the 20th District State House of Representatives. Our forum will be in two parts this evening. The first hour will be devoted to the school board candidates, and after a short five-minute break to change candidate seats, we will seat the candidates running for the 20th District State House. We ask that the audience remain seated during this break so we can continue in a timely fashion. As Angela stated, our questions tonight are coming from the audience, and we have also received a number of questions emailed to us in advance to our website. Each candidate will be allowed a one-minute opening statement, a one-minute response to all questions asked, and a two-minute closing statement. We will rotate the order of candidates, or a candidate who responds first each question. Our League member, Marjorie Lynn, seated here, is our official timekeeper for this evening, so it's important that you keep an eye on her because she will be holding up a 30-second card, a 15-second card, and then a stop card. And I really would appreciate it if you followed the stop card. There are four nonpartisan candidates running for the Plymouth Canton Community School Board. The two candidates running for the six-year seat are Leonardo Savage and Anubam Shun Sidhu. The two candidates running for the two-year partial term are Amina Ahmad and John Lazar- Lazarasvi, and he has declined unfortunately to attend tonight's forum. Let us begin with our opening statements, and Mr. Savage, if you could please introduce yourself and give us your one-minute opening statement.
Okay. My name is Leonardo Savage. I'm a retired clinical consultant. I work mainly with K-12 students at the University of Michigan Botanical Gardens. I'm a docent there, so I teach the kids about botany, trails, etc.
We can't hear you. We can't hear you.
It's awful.
It's a great cell phone.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, you gotta see directly into it.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. All right, I'll repeat what I said. I am a docent at the University of Michigan Botanical Gardens. I teach K-12 students about botany, mainly in the trails and mostly in the conservatory as well. I'm running for this position because I believe that I have something to offer, and I'm looking to see if we can encourage more participation from the public in the Board of Education, as I really don't believe that this is happening right now. For the moment, I think that's all I need to say.
And then, Ms. Sidhu.
Good evening. My name is Anubam Shun Sidhu. I have been a Canton resident for over 17 years, and I've been in public education for over 25 years. I started my education career with tutoring homeless kids and then moving on to teaching high school math and science, and then working at the county level. And in my 25 years, I've had the opportunity to work at the local and district, county and state level. I currently serve as the Secretary of the Plymouth Canton School Board. I was appointed in December 2016, and I'm also chairing the Student Performance and Achievement Committee as a Plymouth Canton Board Member. I hope to continue doing this great work, and during the two years that I've been on the Board, I feel like I've learned a tremendous amount. I'm actually currently taking my certification classes, and I'm running for the Board to continue this great work that we've started.
Thank you. Ms. Amen.
Good evening. I'm Aminah Ahmed, and I'm running for the two-year seat on the Plymouth Canton School Board. I'm sure you've heard of soccer moms. Well, I'm a taxi mom. I have four children spread across elementary, middle, and high school, and just as I try to respond to each child's individual needs as a parent, I envision our district as a place where each student can reach their full potential. I believe that all of our children will thrive when everyone in the community is deeply invested in the public school system. I try to model that by being a very active and involved parent. I've served as the parent voice on numerous committees, ranging from the TAG Study Group to most recently the Board of Education's Policy Subcommittee. I am committed to working with others and will always advocate for all of our children. I look forward to serving you.
Thank you. The first question will be given to Mr. Savage. What civic duties have you performed in the past two years that you are most proud of?
Civic duties?
Civic duties.
Of these volunteer-type duties that I do are as a docent at the Botanical Gardens. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Sidhu.
I've had the free fortune of volunteering in multiple organizations, including, again, working with homeless kids, actless kids, and partnering with Wasna ISD and some of the Wasna schools. So a lot of this volunteer work carries over to the Board work, because that is still volunteer work, and then just getting involved in the community in terms of volunteering in schools and being part of local community groups, and so it's, I think, building stronger communities through that volunteerism.
Ms. Amen.
Could you please repeat the question?
Certainly. What civic duties have you performed in the past two years that you are most proud of?
The civic duties that I've performed in the last two years that I'm most proud of all center on inclusion and belonging, because those are things that are very important to me, and I'm a proud member of the Muslim community of the Western suburbs, and I've worked very hard to build bridges with our community members, reaching out and seeking appointments and becoming more involved in other activities in the larger community, and as well as teaching the larger community about the Muslim community in the area and the needs of the kids, the parents, the families who live here, and I'm very proud of that work.
Thank you. Next question, we will start with Ms. Sidhu. Given that the time commitment for the school board can be 10 to 15 hours per week, how do you plan to meet this commitment?
Well, I've had the opportunity to practice that over the last 20 months that I've been on the school board. It's challenging, but it's rewarding work, and I think when you believe in something, you make that commitment, and I've made that commitment, not only to be on the school board and be at all of the meetings, but also to chair the Student Performance and Achievement Committee work. In addition to attending school events, I'm also fortunate enough to have family members that support me, and my parents are here. I think it takes a community and a village to raise good students, good kids, and the same goes for home. It requires everyone working together, so I'm fortunate that I have family support at home so I can continue the work that I need to do here and in my professional life.
Ms. Amen. Same question.
I think when something is important to us or to any of us, we make time for it. Otherwise, I don't think anybody has time, certainly not in today's world where busyness is definitely a thing. I already serve on the Board's Subcommittee for Policy. We meet regularly. I serve on the District-wide Stakeholder Improvement Committee. I've also served on ALPAC. I serve on the PTO, and so I feel like basically it means moving some of those hours to school board meetings and whatever other responsibilities come with the position. So I'm well aware of the time commitment. I've been attending school board meetings as a parent for over a decade now, and I'm happy to carve out that time for something I'm very passionate about.
Thank you. Mr. Savage, same question.
Well, it's not really a problem for me because I'm retired, so I've got plenty of time, and I'd be quite happy to devote that time to the Board of Education. I feel quite strongly about some of the issues that we'll probably end up discussing tonight, and that's really my answer.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will start with Ms. Amen. How involved should the school board be with the day-to-day operations of the district? Give an example of when it would be appropriate for the school board to overrule a decision of the superintendent.
So I believe very strongly in empowering the administration and the staff, and that the role of the school board is really to set the vision and to craft policies that guide the hard work of the professional educators who make up the district's staff. The only time when I really think that the school board should overrule the decision that the superintendent made would be in the case of student safety. So if I felt that a student's safety was being jeopardized in any way, then perhaps the Board would need to intervene.
Mr. Savage.
I fully agree with that. I think, yes, in the event of student safety being involved, then we would have to try and overrule the superintendent. But apart from that, what say?
Ms. Sidhu.
So, you know, one of the things that we have to understand, the Board's position is really to hire the best superintendent possible, who then is able to lead a very high-functioning district with committed administrators and educators. So our job is really to make sure that we've got the best, the most qualified superintendent, and entrust that person to do the day-to-day operations and the work, and be involved in the policymaking and the decision-making, setting the vision, like what Spinardi said. In terms of overruling the superintendents, I think we have to be very careful in terms of how we work with the superintendent. If there are disagreements, we work that out in a very professional manner, but if we see things that are harming safety or things that are unethical, then yes, we should be able to step in and do something about it.
Thank you very much. Next question. What has been the impact of your involvement in the school district? Please identify a time when you worked on a committee, a project, or initiative that benefited the district, not any individual class or room or school, and we'll start with Mr. Savage.
I was the district representative for Smith Elementary School for a while, and I did attend Board of Education meetings in that capacity and took notes, made sure that my colleagues at Smith Elementary were aware of what was going on and what needed to be done, and if there was any input that needed to be done at the next meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Sidhu.
Yeah, I've been involved with the district work for many, many years, even prior to becoming a Board Member or being appointed as a Board Member. So I was asked to be part of the Student Assessment Data Group at Gallimore, and then I was also asked to be part of the Redistricting Committee a few years back. But the most current recent accomplishment has been the Board working together with the community in passing a safety and security package that's going to really help us ensure that our students are safe and secure, and we've recently hired a Safety and Security Director in terms of making sure that our schools are where they need to be.
Thank you. Ms. Amen.
I've served on the talented Gifted Study Group, which was a district-wide committee. I've also served on the District Improvement Stakeholder Survey Team, and I'm really proud of the work that was done a couple of years ago when I've served as a parent and community voice on the Community District Equity Leadership Team. And I thought it was incredibly important and vibrant work where community members, parents, and administrators from the district came together and talked about what it would look like to have a true lens of equity running throughout every single program that the district runs.
Thank you. And now we go to Ms. Sidhu, and the question is, what do you see as the most pressing issue for the district coming up?
I think the biggest challenge right now that our school district is facing, as well as many other schools across the state, is funding. There were two adequacy studies done over the last four years that pointed to the fact that Michigan schools have been chronically underfunded for the past decade, and Plymouth Canton is actually at the bottom. We are one of the lowest per pupil districts. I think we're about 7,600, and when you look at our surrounding districts like La Bonia and North Fulton Harbor, they're much higher than that. But in terms of the adequacy study, it really pointed to the stakes to make sure that all of our kids are successful and expanding opportunities for all of our students to make sure that they're college and career-ready, and we have to reevaluate how our schools are funded because there are a lot of inequities in our current funding structure.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Amen.
I agree with Anubam, and I believe that funding is the biggest challenge that our district faces, and as a school board member, I would work very strongly across the aisle, across the parties of our legislators who essentially decide our funding as a district, to make sure that they hear our voice and understand the repercussions that our children face when we don't have adequate funding. However, I'm also very cognizant of the fact that there's only so much a school board can do about that, because ultimately it is the state that decides that. And so another issue that I think perhaps policy can have a more direct impact on is closing the incredible achievement gap that we see in the district, and we see that across socioeconomic class, and we also see it across racial lines, and I think that's a very pressing issue that needs to be worked on.
Thank you. Mr. Savage.
Yes, funding is extremely important. I think that we would have to examine the possibility of obtaining some kind of federal backing rather than just state backing, and that can probably done when we talk about safety and security in the schools, and I would like to probably try and do that if I become a member of the Board of Education.
Thank you. The next question, we'll begin with Ms. Amen, and the question is, candidates for the school board often decide to run because of a special need or situation. What makes you come forward at this time?
The special opportunity to serve a partial term of a two-year seat in all transparency because I think it's, I've always been daunted by the six-year terms, so I really appreciated the opportunity that presented itself with this partial term of two years. But I don't come forward because of a special need. I come forward because I believe that I can serve this district, that I can serve our children, the parents, the staff, and that I can work to improve what I already think is a really great place. I moved to Plymouth Canton. I live in Canton. I have for the past 18 years, and I moved here because of the schools and because of the diversity in the community, and I think I can enhance what's already a great Board and a great district.
Thank you. Mr. Savage, same question.
Well, my daughter is a pupil at East Middle School, and my main concern was the safety and security of teachers and students and PCCs schools, and I do have some program in mind that could possibly help me here, but I would need to talk to the Safety and Security Director at the Board of Education to see if that is the way they are thinking. My daughter will be going to high school next year, so she'll have another four years, and again, I want to make sure that she will be safe.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Sidhu.
I'm actually running for the six-year term after having the experience of a two-year term. So when I decided to run for the open position or be appointed, it was never under the impression of some agenda. It was really to give back in terms of what we've benefited from within the community. I have a middle schooler, a son who has a chronic health condition, and we have been so privileged and just honored by the way that the district has really helped him blossom. And so when I saw that opportunity, and I've always been passionate about education, I thought, this is my way of giving back and saying, thank you. I think we can do this for all kids, not just my son. And now that the six-year term is open, I've learned a lot during the two years. I think there's a lot more that I could do with the other Board members, the administrators, and the community, so I look forward to that opportunity.
Thank you. All right. Given your interest in the school board, how many school board meetings have you attended in the past year? This is for, we'll start with Ms. Amen. I'm sorry, Mr. Savage.
Last year, probably two. That's about it.
Ms. Sidhu.
I've had to attend a lot. In addition to the Board meetings, we also have the Subcommittee meetings, and I also enjoy the opportunities when we're invited to attend district events and the graduation. I mean, it's an honor to see the great things that are happening, but prior to being appointed, I actually attended quite a few Board meetings and community work. There was also the Equity Committee, I think we were both a part of, and I think, we don't realize, we have a lot of ways to get involved, not just through the Board. So it's just been an ongoing process for me to learn about the district and to be involved in a variety of ways. So yes, I've attended all the Board meetings in the last couple of years.
Okay. Ms. Amen.
I don't have a count, but I've attended a lot of Board meetings. I've attended Board meetings where we've spilled over in the Boardroom and we moved to a different location. I've attended Board meetings where we are at the Boardroom and standing in the aisle because there's no seats. I've attended Board meetings where I'm getting rapid texts from my husband saying, you're still at the Board meeting? It's going on till now. And, but I am the mom of four. I also have aging in-laws and an aging mother, and so there's lots of pressing things on my time, but I do try to go through the agenda in the minutes and watch the video recordings when I'm not able to attend a meeting, because I like to see the decision-making processes that happen, not just the citizen comments at a Board meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Sidhu. If elected, what would you do differently than the present Board to improve our schools?
Yeah, I say that just continue the movement that we've started. So when I started in December of 2016, that was also with three new Board members. So keep in mind, that was a huge shift for that Board, so having four new members and coming in brand-new. Over the last 20 months, we've actually done a lot of study, a lot of collaborative efforts to make sure that we are a team of eight, so we're not just seven Board members working with the superintendent. We've had a lot of study sessions and a lot of work dedicated to building ourselves, doing a self-evaluation in terms of how do we become better, and not just governing ourselves, governing the school board process, but also making sure that we are a high-functioning, collaborative team to move the district forward. So I'd just like to continue that work.
Thank you. Ms. Amen.
I really admire the current school board, and I recognize that it takes a lot of hard work to work together, and I've seen times when Boards have not worked well together, so I really appreciate it. But one of the, well, two things that I think I would really like to address as a school board member that perhaps have not been addressed to the satisfaction of many parents, including me, is the achievement gap, and as I stated before, the achievement gap is across racial lines, it's across abilities, it is across socioeconomic status, and I really haven't seen the needle move on that in almost a decade. The other thing that I would also like to see how policy can be improved on is something that would help reduce the disparities in discipline across race, so suspensions and expulsions, and I'd like us to explore some restorative practices around discipline.
Thank you. Mr. Savage, same question.
Well, I think I would concentrate on seeing what avenues are available for the funding. I don't think the current school board has probably exhausted all the potential avenues that are out there, and as I mentioned before, there may be some ways of getting some federal grants, there may be other ways of getting some funding for the schools, and this is what I would propose to do.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Ms. Amen. This is on the subject of arming teachers or aides in a classroom. What is your position on this? Are you for, against, or you're fearing on arming teachers or the aide in the classroom?
So I think a district has the responsibility to keep all students safe at all times. However, I do not believe that guns on school property is the solution to this problem, particularly in the case of arming students or staff. So no, I don't support arming students or staff.
Thank you. Mr. Savage.
One of the issues that I examined before I came here was the possibility of having resource officers in every school in the PCCS district, and I think that is the way to do it. Arming students and teachers is not the way to do it. There are some school districts that have done different methods. One of them is Leland County School District, would actually put into place detectors in the classrooms that would record a shot and then store a lockdown and call the police. This is kind of like shutting the door after the horse has bolted, because really you want to try and do something more active than something more passive, and they could have done better than spend $156,000 on these detectors.
Ms. Sidhu.
Current state law actually says that you have to write to carry a human permit, but the state, new state ruling did state that local school districts have local control in terms of policy development, and we recently passed a resolution at the Plymouth Canton School Board saying that we would like to have a gun-free school zone because we don't feel that guns will make our schools safer, like Aminah said, having more people armed with guns. But I think we really have to wait till the law clears itself out in terms of what the state law says and what the Supreme Court ruling is to really have a final policy around that. So I think that's just a work in progress in terms of where are we going to land.
Thank you. Mr. Savage, what types of programs should be instituted to help young struggling readers?
Types of programs that should be instituted? I haven't really thought about it, to be perfectly honest, so I can't really answer a question for you.
Thank you. Ms. Sidhu.
I've been fortunate enough to be involved with some county-level and statewide work in that. Because at the county level, we have been looking at other reading legislation, and we are really advocating for literacy coaches in every building to help students, and I think at the Board level, we really have to entrust our curriculum staff and the administrators to do the research, look at what's best for kids within their buildings, and also looking at culturally proficient instruction and making sure that kids are engaged with the content that they have in front of them. But it's really a holistic view in terms of looking at the resources available, the curriculum, training, the staff, but again, we have to let them look at the research and look at their kids and see what's best going to meet their needs. In addition to that, however, I think we need to make sure we have to work with parents and advocate for student literacy work at home, and if those opportunities aren't there, to build those opportunities in the community through libraries or through other programs.
Thank you. Ms. Amen.
I think I agree with Anubam that we really need to entrust our administrators and our educators with deciding what are the best steps to take with, for instance, a young struggling reader, but at the same time, I think the Board does need to support sort of our- But at the same time, I think the board does need to support sort of a wraparound approach to every student in the district, where we encourage the community to step up, where we encourage family literacy, and where we do our best to secure the funding that will allow the reading interventionists, the literacy coaches, and other mentors that will help a student who perhaps needs more time and effort than a teacher can spare, especially with our current class sizes. I would love to be able to say that we can reduce class sizes, because I know that educators perform better when there is fewer children in the class.
Thank you. Let's see. Next question, we'll go to Ms. Sidhu. What is your plan to make sure that all students feel safe at school?
I think, again, we need to work with the administrators, superintendent, to create policies. It's really around the policies that we develop at the district level, which then get implemented at the building level to ensure student safety and security. One of the things that we recently did was hire a school safety officer, a director, who is going to actually work with law enforcement, homeland security, and really map out a plan. So it's, again, looking at the experts and asking them, what do you know? Talk to people around you and do the research, and then bring that to the board and have community members be present, and have all of us talk about what's best to ensure student safety, because I'm not a safety expert. I don't know what happens with law enforcement and homeland security. But we're lucky enough to have all of those people working around us and with us.
Okay. I feel like I messed this up. Ms. Ahmed.
I'm sorry, but can you repeat? I was listening so intently, but now I...
What is your plan to make sure that all students feel safe at school?
So I think the district is moving in the right direction with hiring professionals who are experts at physical safety. But I think I would encourage, I would encourage the board as well as the administration to look at safety, not just as physical safety, which is what I feel that most people refer to it as, but, you know, in this time of rampant mental illness and so many stresses on families and children, I would urge them to look at emotional safety, physical safety, and also safety of environment in terms of promoting a culture in our district that is compassionate and empathetic, and that allows children to feel safe in every aspect of their identity and their person.
Mr. Savage.
Well, as I mentioned before, I do believe that resource officers are useful, would act as a deterrent. I think you can give the kids a feeling that they're a little bit safer than they were before. There is some infrastructure changes that should be made to the schools as well, to make sure that they are safe from being attacked. You know, it's going to be 100% sure, it is going to be 100% secure even, because kids have to come to school, they have to go from school. So there's always targets out there for competition.
Sorry about that. We loaded here. Okay, we will start with Ms. Ahmed. How would you promote diversity and inclusion principles within our school system?
I would, I would start by looking at the work that's already been done. So there's been a number of initiatives that have already been taken. The board in the past has passed a racial equity and inclusion policy. Like I said, there were district and building equity leadership teams. I would first look at all the sort of conclusions that those committees and all that hard work came to. And then I would also challenge myself and other board members to think of perhaps more creative ways to foster inclusion. Because I think right now, the district is definitely very diverse. You can pull the student statistics from any of our schools and see that diversity is increasing, just as it's increasing in our communities, it's increasing in our schools. But I think we need to do a better job of truly embracing the diversity and not just tolerating it.
Thank you. Mr. Savage. Same question. How would you promote diversity and inclusion principles within our school system?
I think they're already there.
Ms. Sidhu.
As Amina mentioned, we have done a lot of work in terms of creating policies and programs that are expanding on this work. We introduced culturally proficient instruction over the past couple of years, and we're making sure that the materials that has been adopted by the board is representative of our student population. We have, well, the district has done a great job by asking the school to look at the lens of equity through their PD programs. So for the last three years, they've had Dr. Brown, they've done work with Dr. Hammer out of Wayne State University, they recently had a seminar with Dr. J. Marks out of Oakland Schools. And all of them have done this deep research around equity, inclusion, and culturally proficient instruction. So I say that it's an ongoing process, we need to continue to learn. This is a never-ending work. So I applaud the district for continuing and starting that work, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And this is where I would implore the community to get involved, because it takes all of us to advance this work.
Thank you. Mr. Savage. What community service organizations do you actively participate in?
Community service organizations?
Ms. Sidhu.
Is this just within Plymouth Canton or anywhere?
Anywhere, as long as it's a community service organization.
I was recently asked to work with the Washington Promise. I actually, again, started my education career working with Plymouth Canton, Washington County. So they reached out to me and asked me to be part of their new Washington Promise work, which is really looking at advancing adverse kids. Just started that. I actually belong to the NEFCURE Foundation, again, due to my son's chronic health condition that is part of the community work that I do in terms of doing local fundraisers, advocating for research and new advanced medicines for kids with that condition, in addition to just promoting, again, local programs for our school district within Plymouth Canton.
Thank you. And Ms. Ahmed.
I'm, was there a timeframe on the question? Did you say two years or?
It just says what community organizations do you actively participate in?
Okay. So I've participated in a number of community organizations over the years, but most recently, I think my most consistent participation is with the Plymouth Canton Interfaith Community Outreach Group. And the premise of that group essentially is that people can, can come together across difference when you're serving the community. So we've done food drives, we've done clothing drives, we've done, you know, book exchanges, we've assembled packages for the homeless, we've done educational programs in different faith homes. And the source of great pride to many of us is a beautiful interfaith quilt that is currently hanging in the Canton Public Library, and you can go and see it. And even someone like me, who my mom said can't sew, was able to help in the crafting of that quilt, and we're exceptionally proud of it.
Thank you. And Mr. Savage.
I think you already answered.
You started, I'm sorry. The next question, thank you for that. Do you believe that reducing the compensation of teachers and/or restricting their collective bargaining rights is an effective way to reduce school system operating expenses? Why or why not? And we will start with Ms. Sidhu.
I think this relates to the funding issue. You know, when we think about what's our priority, I think we would all agree that our priority is kids, making sure that they have the best educational opportunities and that they're safe and secure in our environments. And for the educational possibilities, it really, you need to invest in staff. So if we want to retain, attract and retain talent, you have to compensate people for that. Many of our teachers have advanced degrees, masters are above, and they should be paid professionally. And if the collective bargaining process allows them to get to those fair wages, then let's support that. I really feel like our teachers give so much of themselves emotionally, mentally, physically, in all capacities, but they also financially give back. So I would advocate for increased funding for teachers.
And then Ms. Ahmed.
I do not believe that the way to reduce operating costs of the district are by reducing teacher compensation or by reducing their opportunity to work collectively. I really believe that teaching environments are learning environments, and I can't fathom how children can learn effectively if they are being taught by professionals who are economically strapped, because we, as a district, cannot compensate them adequately. And I'm fully committed to working with fellow board members to keep budget cuts and funding constraints outside of the classroom as much as is possible.
Thank you. And Mr. Savage.
I totally agree. I don't believe that teachers should be penalized because there is insufficient funding for the district. And as I said before, I think it would be necessary to examine what avenues are available for federal funding to try and bring about more pay for teachers who are probably better qualified or very well-qualified and who are not being paid the amount that they should be paid.
Thank you. Our next question, we will go, start with Ms. Ahmed. And the question is, Senator Colbert recently proposed a change in language in history books, eliminating references to the KKK and Rome versus Wei, to name a few. He would also take the word democratic out of the...
Correct.
Reference to the country's democratic values. Do you agree with these changes? Why or why not?
I do not agree with these changes at all. I've been to some of the sessions that have been held to discuss these changes. I feel very strongly that our curriculum needs to be representative of history as much as possible. We do know that the victors tend to write history, but as much as is possible, elements such as, even though they're ugly elements, like the KKK and other instances that really show a not-so-great side of human beings, whether they're, you know, whether it's the United States, whether it's other countries, but I feel very strongly that these things should not be eliminated. I'm not for it at all.
Thank you. And Mr. Savage.
Well, I think that's absolute garbage, frankly. You can't change history. Why would you try to manipulate it in that way? And what would it achieve? I don't think I can agree with any of that at all.
Thank you, Ms. Sidhu.
I agree with those sitting around me. And I, again, go back to the experts. So when we look at social studies standards, we look at the experts that help us look at what makes sense and what curricular resources are aligned to those standards. To change words because one person doesn't agree with them, and also looking at promoting inclusion versus divisiveness, we have to make sure that not only are we accurately representing our text through historical content, but we want to make sure that we are involving inclusivity in that process and not divisiveness.
Thank you. Mr. Savage. What is your stand on vaccinating children?
Well, should we vaccinate? It's as simple as that. I don't believe that people who say, we can't vaccinate our kids because they might get autism or something like that, that has never been proved. Somebody has tried to prove it, but it's never been proved. And non-vaccination is a no-no as far as I'm concerned.
Ms. Sidhu.
That's a very interesting question, because I have a son with a compromised immune system who has to go through some sort of cancer treatment every year, and he cannot be vaccinated for certain vaccines. And we actually had all of his immunizations until this disease surfaced. But I am, I am a total believer of vaccination for those that can handle it. His doctor has stated that he cannot have certain vaccinations, otherwise it would trigger a relapse and would ultimately lead to very disturbing health concerns for us. But I also believe the herd, you know, the community in terms of if you have lots of kids that are vaccinated, that can handle the vaccinations, that we protect those vulnerable kids that cannot be vaccinated. So yes, I support vaccination, but I also have to be mindful of those that cannot have vaccinations.
Ms. Ahmed.
I find that an interesting question, because we're presumably running through school board versus public health officials, but at the same time, I do have a background in science, I believe very strongly in data, and at the same time, I recognize that ultimately numbers represent people, in this case, students. And so while I do believe in vaccination, I also recognize that there are cases like Anubhav just mentioned, where her son cannot receive certain vaccinations. And so I think we need to take all of those things into consideration when addressing such an issue. However, herd immunity is scientifically proven, and I believe that benefits our community in general. I think if you look at the rise of communicable diseases in this country, and particularly in our state, you can directly correlate it to non-vulnerable kids not receiving vaccinations.
Thank you. Ms. Sidhu. Is it okay with you if children do not say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. You know, in state law, that we have to allow, we have to say the Pledge of Allegiance every day, but we also have to respect students' decisions not to participate, and that's okay.
And Ms. Ahmed.
State law requires that we give students the opportunity to say the pledge, and I believe that, for instance, Jehovah's Witnesses have religious objections to saying the pledge. And I don't think that any student in our district should be forced to say the pledge if they don't want to.
Okay. And Mr. Savage.
Well, why do we have a Pledge of Allegiance if nobody's going to say? That's my attitude, I'm sorry. But I think I agree with my colleagues over here that students should have the opportunity to either say it or not say, depending on their particular beliefs.
Thank you. All right. The next question, and these are our last two questions for the evening. What do you believe is the biggest challenge for the Plymouth Canton schools in implementing the safety and security measures that have been somewhat discussed up here this evening? And we will start with Ms. Ahmed.
So in the Policy Subcommittee, when we went over the safety and security policies, we were strongly advised to wait for a state law to be finalized on the issue. And I think I would defer to that. I would also defer, I know that the district has hired a Director of Public Safety, I believe that's its designation, his name is Mr. John Walker, and he's an expert in the field. So I would defer to the experts in the field and offer recommendations only after hearing from them.
Mr. Savage.
I think the biggest hindrance at the moment is probably the funding, as we mentioned before. If the funding was there to improve the security and safety at the schools, including the infrastructure, not just placing resource officers there, then I think that would go partway to solving the problem.
And Ms. Sidhu.
Actually, we recently passed a security package, over $3 million security package that is going to work on the infrastructure, improving security measures at each building. But in terms of the biggest challenge, so now that we've got the funding, we've got the equipment in place, and the plan is ready to go, one of the challenges that we're running up against is what becomes part of the student record. And this is a policy issue, like Amina mentioned. So right now, we're struggling with a policy that protects student privacy. So who gets to see what's behind the video footage, and at what point can someone access that, and what do they do with that? And those are really sensitive things. I mean, there's a national law that protects children's privacy, and so we have to work with lawyers in terms of developing a policy that protects kids, but also gives us the information that we in law enforcement need when they need it.
Thank you. Mr. Savage. What can be done to eliminate the need today for teachers to buy their own classroom supplies?
I don't go back to funding. I mean, the district should be responsible for purchasing supplies for the schools. Teachers should... Teachers shouldn't have to pay for them. I fully, I fully agree with a lot of parents, including me, that it can be quite costly purchasing supplies at the beginning of the school year, and I don't see why teachers should have to help out as well. They don't get paid enough. I should...
Ms. Sidhu. I'm sorry, Ms. Sidhu.
I agree with Mr. Savage. This is a funding issue. And, you know, I was a classroom teacher, my parents helped me with school supplies, buying things for the classroom, and I, you know, applaud them. I was also in debt for the first five years because I was buying so much for the school. I know teachers should not be responsible for doing it, but they're still doing it today. And you think about, it's not just school supplies, they buy so much for their kids, science equipment, or they want to do a lab or an experiment that just engages kids in a different way. We should have enough funding to make sure that the classrooms are well-equipped, to make sure that our students have the best opportunities with the resources that they need to be successful.
And Ms. Ahmed.
I think when we start to view education as a commodity versus a service, then things like people looking at a budget line item and wondering why their, I don't know, whatever amount it would be of stationery is too much, result in things like this. And I would like to see us be able to fund classrooms adequately, and teachers definitely shouldn't have to be able to do things. Like I said, I have four kids in the schools, I feel like I have crayons coming out of my ears, even if they're high schoolers at the beginning of the school year. I try to help teachers out, but at the same time, I do recognize that it's a huge burden. And during winter months, we often get notes saying, hey, can you help out with disinfected wipes or tissues? And so it's obvious that when parents aren't able to, teachers are doing it themselves, and it's a huge burden that we should be able to fix.
Well, there are no more questions, so we will be doing the wrap-up, which you have two minutes for. You can take the full two or one half, but this is the time we ask you to sort of cover things that may not have been covered, that might be important to you and that you would like to just really have in the voters' minds when they leave tonight. And we will begin in reverse order, so Ms. Ahmed, you will begin.
So like I said before, I'm, my name is Amina Ahmed, I'm running for the two-year seat on the Plymouth Canton School Board. I have four children, I have them at elementary, middle, and high school level, and I really do believe that we all do better when we all support each other, when we all empathize with each other, and when we have a compassionate point of view. For me, that looks like every single person in the community, whether or not they have a child in the school system, investing in this public school system. It does not look like adults using kids as pawns in ideological games, in funding games, in differences where we decide to distort what is essentially the right of every single child into a business thing, where we start worrying about, like I said, budget line items and cutting costs and claiming that teachers are overcompensated and that students can somehow learn by themselves. I also strongly believe that as the diversity in our district increases, we need to do better in terms of representation, in terms of hiring diverse staff, in terms of addressing the needs of children, quite honestly, like mine, who have needs that are different than other kids at times, or than the majority of the population. And I believe that we, that I can make a strong contribution to thinking innovatively about such things, from my life experience and also from my ability to connect. And people say I talk a lot, but sometimes talking helps one connect, and I'm always game for a cup of coffee and a conversation. And I think those skills help on a school board where you need to come together and make decisions that benefit every single child in this district.
Thank you. Ms. Sidhu.
Again, I'll reiterate, my name is Anubhav Chitsudu, I'm running for the six-year term, and I am currently on the school board. I was appointed in December of 2016. I look forward to the opportunity of continuing the great work that we started as a team of eight, again, working toward my board certification classes where I've learned about board policies, procedures, curriculum and instruction, board governance. So I feel like it's that a year and a half has really equipped me now to just go in at full force. But when we think about why we're here, why are we all here? We are here because we believe in kids, we believe in education, we believe in building stronger communities. And all of that is done through us working together to build a stronger school district, which we know will ultimately build stronger communities. Because at the end of the day, we all want healthy kids running out there who will give back to our communities, who will be productive, who will be successful. So education is an issue that we all should embrace, whether you're on the school board or not on the school board. So I hope that you will vote for me. My name is Anubhav Chitsudu.
Thank you. And Mr. Savage.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity of being up here and speaking to everybody. Secondly, I must say that I'm quite surprised that out of such a large community, I'm the only one, apart from the president incumbent, who's decided to apply for the school board. I would like to have seen other people on the ballot as well. However, apart from that, I think there are a lot of issues that need to be addressed that we haven't brought up here today. The well-being of the kids is important to me. We have such a lot that they have to put up with, the opioid crisis, they have gender dysphoria, they have all sorts of things, which we never had when we were kids. So we should try and make sure that the counselors at the school are trained well enough to be able to handle these things as well. This is one of the things that I was hoping to be able to do as a member of the Board of Education, and that's really all I have to say at the moment.
Well, thank you very much. We would like to thank all the candidates who participated in tonight's forum. For the two seats on the Plymouth Canton City School Board, there is the full term and then the partial term. On the November ballot, you will be asked to choose one of the candidates, and we will now take a five-minute break to set up for the next session. Again, thank you. It'll be a hard choice, and it's nice to see such well-informed people running for the school board. Thank you.